I'm gonna do the change.
You go now?
Yep.
All right. Can we start?
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You have roll call, please.
No, this is it. It's returned.
Commissioner Anzorgi is coming.
He is in route.
He's in route. Commissioner Rushton, present. Chairman Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Suresh Little.
Here.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? You can just have one at the door, but you're just lost. All right, so then that brings us to the action items. We have the HVAC project update.
Before we start that, if you take a look outside on the roof next door, they started Monday on schedule. They've been working very hard and they sent me a daily update. I'll forward to one of them. It's pretty impressive. There are photos every day of what they're doing and a brief bullet points on how much work was done.
Excellent.
So yesterday, I think they had 12 people there, I counted. So, so far it's going well and I've been impressed with them. They took all the stones off and we recycled them and we use them at different sites. We had a lot of power that we could use in a different location, so it's not so perfect. But so far they're right on schedule and one of the rest will be here next Tuesday to give you an update. I don't forget, I'll send you their daily update, just one of them. I think you need to follow that, but just to see what they're giving us every single day, which is pretty impressive, I thought.
Who's actually providing the update to you?
It's the lots representative.
So the project manager from the company?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And he copies our consultants.
I know, I counted eight when I came in.
Yeah, there were 12 yesterday. And they're working? They said six weeks, but we've done four six weeks. But they started right on the day that they said. Assuming the weather holds up, they're pretty optimistic. So far, so good. So I just thought you should be willing to know that. On the HVAC, based on the discussion and votes taken Tuesday, forgot what day today is. Today's Thursday, isn't it? Been a busy week. I met yesterday with Gary O'Connor and then with the engineer. DMW will hopefully have a estimate bid for us to replace the bad units. And I asked him to give us a bid up to 10 because if other ones go bad, you don't want to come back all the time. So I told him to give us a firm bid based on 10 of them and, I mean, they don't have a structure to bids. So I'm optimistic I'll have it to you by next Tuesday meeting. Also met with engineers yesterday. And the good thing is, the way they designed the project, if you want to do it section by section, it's doable. The baseboard heat was clearly designed, it could be done as a whole project or independently. And so they're going back to Hearst and ABI and the way the bids were structured, that part can be broken out easily also. So we will have that option for you also Tuesday. And that's the controls, the borders and the baseboard heat. So if you choose to do it piece by piece versus the whole project, we'll have those numbers. I'm pretty confident to you by Tuesday, if you must go forward.
So will this baseboard heat solve the cooling problem as well? I mean, as far as like...
It should definitely help, yes.
Okay. So people whose offices are adversely affected in the winter that have to sit like on the bench like boring or something?
Should in theory, yes.
That'll, oh, okay.
Yeah. So the good thing is, the way they designed it, it can be sectioned off. I didn't realize they did it that way, which actually is a good thing. So in terms, they don't have to design anything new, maybe some minor modification. But we'll have a full update on both of those by Tuesday morning. I'm hoping I can have firm documents and options for you by Tuesday morning.
Commissioner?
I, I'd be interested in discussion about, I was very pleased with the design that we were presented with. I was very unhappy with the attitude, presentation and sloppiness of the, of our presenter, Kirsten. And I'd be interested in some discussion about asking the firm to give us a different consultant. I know we have a contract with the firm, but I don't think it's with Kirsten.
No, it's like the roof consultant. We have a contract, when we go into a process with the roof consultant, we have a contract with the AEC century, not with the individual. So we made changes there. I don't know how this firm is structured, but it's not with an individual, it's with the company.
Mr. Minister. If by next Tuesday, you have a couple of different outline plans, could you also request for each of those plans a scheduled draws? That we internally would better understand what our financial needs would be?
Yeah, I think we can, yeah, yeah. On those plans, if you choose it that way, we still will be purchasing the equipment ourselves.
Okay.
I just want to follow up, if I could, but I, it was not only the attitude. It was two different occasions, we were presented with erroneous information. She didn't do her work with, with checking out the bids. And she was irritated with us and very disrespectful, I thought, in her presentation because we challenged her. And I, I'm serious about, and I'd make that a motion if we need to, but I'd like to have Tony be here before that happened. But I, I'm serious.
There's no motions here. This is a budget workshop, but you can have dialogue.
But I believe, I believe that would be in our best interest.
Commissioner Law?
I disagree because I, I took not an attitude away from that, but total frustration in, in this board's inability to make a decision. We make a decision, somebody comes up with an idea, we should go back. We make another decision, we should go back. Yes, it was a question of the numbers, but the numbers she presented to us was less than what we had been presented. So, you know, I think it would have been different if the number had been, been higher. But I certainly understood her frustration because this board has been unable to make a decision on this building. And there's a lot of work into it. She is very good at what she's done. As she said, she's done so many huge projects. And I think there's some difficulty in, in really trying to figure out how to lead this board into making the best decision. She put it out there, she presented it very eloquently the week before, that she had reservations without getting into the weeds. She had reservations on one bid being able to complete the project. So as a consultant, I think they expect that, if that is their advice, we would take their advice. And, and instead, this board began to nitpick and pick apart her job, which was her interviews, how she did them, how long they lasted, et cetera. We decided to micromanage her job. That was frustration, pure frustration. So no, she has done a good job for this guy. I will not vote to replace her as our project manager because I think she has looked out for the best of our best in this building.
We are getting off, off topic. I understand that, I know. So I'd like us to move on. I mean, this is...
We can have a full discussion Tuesday. It is, it's the first thing on the agenda Tuesday. And hopefully by Tuesday, I'll have some firm options for you.
Commissioner Rush?
Since other commissioners were allowed to speak on the issue, I would request my opportunity to also speak on the issue at this time.
Please keep it short.
I will. I agree 100% with exactly what Melinda said. I think it would be a disservice, once again, with this board to continue to nitpick at someone who is trying to provide us with all of the opportunity to make the right decision. Thank you.
I just, mine was a question. Since we're going to be discussing this Tuesday, the thing that was of concern was to find out that Hearst was the company that did the very installation that we saw chat. So I'm just wondering why that didn't come out?
I can respond, I, I, I'm, I'm gonna call a person from Hearst and get the contact information for the people we saw in Grand Rapids. I will call them.
And find out if they were happy with it?
Yes.
Okay.
If they truly did the installation.
Right.
Because Hearst has different branches. They have the Traverse City office, they have offices throughout the state.
So if they did do it and if they did do it, were they happy?
It might have been Hearst, but it might have been others. I don't know, sorry.
Thank you.
She actually, I was just gonna say that, you said.
Just kidding.
Well, I called chat yesterday with this request because I wanted to know... I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I had a need for a tissue.
I, I phoned yesterday to request that chat call, the bus station in Grand Rapids, and ask whether Hearst completed the project on time and whether they did a high value job and just asked them about their satisfaction. Because I was dismayed that we didn't hear that she didn't report to us that they were the ones that had done that project. So I think that'll be important to find that out.
I'm guessing, I'm just guessing here, I don't think John and maybe Kirsten knew that. Because when they set up the tour, it was from the manufacturer of the equipment. We went down there, I mean, I was with them all day, so was Gary O'Connor. We never once talked about who actually got the contract. So I, I don't know. They may, you'd think they would have known that.
Well, and you think that they should have, they should have asked themselves and shared it with us.
Yes.
My only concern was the insulation. If you can see light through the windows, we should get someone in and insulate the windows or at least cough them or something. I mean, that's what Kirsten said and I think that's something we should, could do immediately.
Yeah.
I don't think it'd be that expensive.
That's true.
You know? Commissioner Wessel?
This is a budget meeting.
Yes, trying to get that.
This relates to budget. If we're willing to spend $200,000 extra thousand on something, we do need to know that there's a reason to do it. And my colleagues have voted for the higher bid, we need to know why. Our consultant is asking us to spend $200,000 more than we need to spend for the same job. And I think that relates to budget. And I don't know how we begin to look at budget if we're, if we're not considering that as well. So I, I take strong disagreement with Melinda and Deb's statement. They were willing to spend more money than they needed to have to spend. And it's not nitpicking to say, why do we need to spend $200,000 more? And it boggles my mind that we would be willing to do that. And it's irresponsible with taxpayers' dollars. Thank you.
But she explained clearly that it could cost us more in the long run with Hearst, with overruns, et cetera. And she explained all that in detail. She also said they may not use all of the $200,000, that they're not calling it a contingency. My guess is that ABI has it in there in the labor portion, which she said was the most important piece. They've got that built in there. I strongly believe it is.
All right, we'll move on now to the budget review and expenditure review.
All right, last week, Michelle wasn't here, but we did struggle without her. We barely got through it.
We barely got through it.
Barely got through it, but we did. So all that Jeb and I could do was just pass out the books. And you have a memo that I outlined last week. And this is just the same as what I passed out Tuesday, but it's on this big, this very point. But John is back from his conference. You have to state the, for the conference, I think.
Yes.
Michelle's back from her camping trip. And so I'll turn it over to two of them. I assume you want to review the general consensus of where we are now and then talk about the specific revenue, the expenditures and talk about who we want to bring in next week and review this memo and talk about future dates.
Yeah, I was gonna take the floor for a moment. And one of the things, because it relates to budget, is a topic that we covered at our conference. As you know, that there is attempt to file a class action lawsuit against all counties for foreclosing properties. What the opposing party is trying to fix is a taking clause, more or less that we're taking property in not giving the equity that one would have in the property, but only involuntarily taking it for the, the lack of payment of taxes. What they're asking for, and this is going to probably federal court and it'll probably be dragged out for some time, but this would have an effect on the general fund, is a look back to six years on all foreclosed properties.
Oh, 60?
Six.
Oh, I thought you said 60. I was just gonna say, what?
Let me clear my throat here.
You better speak into the microphone a little better so we can hear the numbers.
Yeah, that before these ladies were even born.
I was gonna say.
That's true.
Six-year look back. What they want is the difference between the foreclosed property taxes that were outstanding and the fair market value or 100%, 125% of fair market value.
100%? How much 125?
That would be catastrophic. It would, it could put some counties in bankruptcy. Granted, the courts have not made any decisions, they haven't gone anywhere. But because the Board of Commissioners are delegated to create the delinquent tax revolving fund and subsequently the tax revolving fund, the foreclosure 517 fund, they're suing the counties. They've removed the county treasurers from this and most lawsuits are now being filed against the counties. We have MMRMA representing us on the lawsuit's behalf. But annually, I come before you in June and present to you what is available for transfer from the foreclosure fund, which would be considered sale proceeds or excess sale proceeds. So the 517 doesn't have the money. It would have to come from the general fund because we have transferred everything that would have been access at that time. It is of great concern to all counties right now how this proceeds. And I just want to put it, you know, in the back of your minds, you know, not only while we do our current year budget, but for future year budgets, we have no idea what kind of recourse this is gonna have for us. Additionally, they're looking at compromises. And one of the things slated to be put on the table is the 18% interest that the tax revolving fund charges for those properties that are greater than a year and a half delinquent. If that's so, that's a significant source of revenue for this county in making MERS payments, building that 516 fund balance to do the HVAC projects, to do roof projects, so on and so forth. If that's brought down in any manner, that's gonna have significant impact on us. So I just wanted to briefly bring that up. Yes, ma'am?
Do they have any idea before, how much time it will take to go through the court process?
Because they're doing it by jurisdiction, each judge is taking their sweet time. There is a federal case right now, Raphaeli case, that they're waiting for that to be finalized. Once that has been finalized, I think more of these judges in the circuit or at the Supreme Court will...
They'll have a direction.
They have a direction and have a precedent to go off of. So we're kind of in a stall pattern and just constantly be reactive.
So what I hear you saying as a result of this, whatever action we take going forward as far as spending dollars, we have to rely strictly on the general fund at this point because we really don't know if we're gonna...
The 516 is gonna be, that's the tax revolving fund, that's what I pay out to the townships. And that's gonna be pretty much left alone. The only thing that is up for consideration is the interest that I charge on those delinquent taxes.
And those dollars go into the 517?
516, stay in the 516. But annually, we transfer...
Whatever.
Whatever to MERS for construction, so on and so forth. But that's, that's where you get a bulk of your money is from my, from the treasurer's 516.
Okay.
The 517 is the tax foreclosure fund.
Okay.
That's where I foreclose on a property, I take it to auction and try to recoup the money from it.
Yeah, okay.
And what they're saying is, is that we're not recouping or giving back that excess proceeds.
Yeah, equity in the house, whatever.
The other twist to it is, we actually, Michelle and I met with the MMRMA rep Monday or Tuesday. And we talked about, because they're covering our insurance costs, but at least the rep was not aware of the fact it could be retroactive.
Yeah.
Because in theory, they're covering us up just for the first $25,000, which I'm sure the legal fees are probably gonna be at that. It's a history question and he didn't actually know it, maybe his law firm, he's a salesperson. But I said, so let's say that the counties lose the case and there's damages. Are you covering those costs?
Additionally, what concerns me even further is, we have a six-year look back period with the 517. The 517 works bare bones. Basically, I paid for the title, worked on all the properties, I paid for all the searches and so on and so forth, the postings. There's not a lot of money in there. And that's the way it was designed. It wasn't designed to have surplus funds, you know, sitting in there forever. Every two years, if there is any surplus funds from sales prior, it's automatically transferred over to the general fund. But we may have direction, assuming this upcoming foreclosure process, to withhold or not foreclose as a, as a, as a state with this pending lawsuit because we don't want to incur that liability. We don't know what that's gonna look like.
John, did you say that this is a series of individual suits or a clash actions?
It's a combination, I'm sorry. We are part of the 14 counties.
So it's mixed.
Throughout the state. So it's interesting because in theory, different judges could rule differently.
Correct.
So it's not a statewide, it's not against all 83 counties. And the way it's structured is based on who has legal precedent, different parts of the state. So the question I asked is, what happens if different judges rule differently? No matter how this is gonna come out, it's gonna be appealed, no matter who wins. What I'm hearing, this is gonna be dragged on for a long time.
This is gonna be...
We're at the beginning of the beginning. The case here is in Charlevoix County. Judge Hayes is the judge on this case.
Who started it? Which, Charlevoix sounds like is the first, was that the first?
No, there's a, no, it's, I think all kind of same time, but they were broken up in zones. Each area found someone that was impacted and they filed claims on behalf of that person. So it depends on the jurisdiction and who the individuals are. So I don't know how many there are throughout the state, do you know, John? I think we're part of 14 counties.
Yeah, I would say yesterday, there are at least six to seven different lawsuits, all being done by the same attorney throughout the state, encompassing multiple jurisdictions.
Yeah, so it's, it's very complicated.
So, but nonetheless, it's just a briefing as to a potential liability. I talked with our auditors as to posting some sort of liability. Our recommendation from not only our legal counsel, but from our auditors is for the next upcoming years, there are, we will put any surplus funds from the 517 that would be eligible to the 5, to the general fund, put those as liabilities and not transfer them.
And one option it could be, I mean, you never know it's gonna come out. It could be, the judges could rule in favor of the plaintiff, but say, okay, we're gonna change this going forward, not retroactive too. So, you know, it's, it's way, we're at the beginning of the beginning.
We are.
But this could have tremendous impact on counties, yes.
Well, so I think what I understood that you said was that you aren't going to foreclose on anything because of the possibility that...
We're waiting for state direction, we're waiting for more legal direction as to how these suits are gonna be going forward. Because if we do foreclose on it, we are, would be exposed to that liability. Whereas if we keep them as a delinquent tax, that interest will continue to accrue in perpetuity, if you will. So really, we don't have a lot of direction, but nonetheless, it is huge on our radar right now and...
Actually, I'm going to the hearing tomorrow, just in Charlevoix County. I'm curious on what's gonna happen. This is a big issue.
Right.
And it's, Judge Hayes is having it, I think, in the morning, but I'm gonna go to the courthouse and see where we are. When we talked originally, this could potentially, I use the word potentially, have major impact. But the judges could rule all different directions. I mean, they, they could rule, okay, the state, you gotta change your policy effective 2020 or 21 or 22. Well, they could go back six years. Or they could say, okay, you have to pay X percentage for this and that going forward. I mean, so it's just way...
Wide open.
And no matter who, how it's gonna come out, the judges, it's gonna be appealed. And this could drag on for years and years. I don't think there's gonna be a compromise.
No, no, they're, they're looking for blood. I mean, there's no doubt about it. Yes, ma'am?
Did this all begin because the, the piece that was foreclosed on for $10, the gentleman came and paid his taxes and the treasurer or whoever?
That's a classic example.
There was another $10 and they took it home. I get the other side when it...
There's a lot of examples like that.
That started it, yeah.
That's the Raphaeli case.
Yeah, okay, then it's, I was gonna ask if that was the case, yeah. Do I, I certainly get...
The treasurers have no authority to compromise. It is state law.
No, but if that treasurer had said, dude, there's another $10 in interest, you wanna pay it or lose your home? I, the gentleman didn't know there was...
That's extreme case, but there's several examples.
But there's been the extreme cases along. This was the most extreme.
Off the record, if we have an instance in our county like that, I'd just write a check.
I know, I know you do. And I appreciate that.
It's, I'm, half the time, we can't get ahold of them in time. You know, we make phone calls, we call next of kin, but I'm not foreclosing on something for five bucks.
Exactly.
There's another case where the person paid the full amount due, but was late. So his interest automatically added up. So he lost his property because of being a week late and only for the interest amount. He paid his full taxes.
Yes, that's what I was...
But it wasn't cashed in time. Shepherd's written a day later, something like that. It was a fairly small amount.
Yes, yeah.
So there's a lot of those examples out there.
The hard part is, is when you start writing those checks for those $10 that you, sounds reasonable to you, you're giving an unfair advantage to one taxpayer and are you gonna be willing to do that for the other $22,000 or $30,000 parcels? Because a $10 a parcel, it's gonna add up.
Yes.
You know, that's...
She's, she's my conscience.
That is the hard part because...
Or you're her conscience, maybe.
But we're talking about those extreme cases where it's...
When you do it for one...
$5 because they didn't understand the interest.
Yeah, yeah. And, no, she has made me aware several times that...
Well, we have to be careful because we scan the risk of being sued then by the other side too. Because we do have to follow along what it says.
But I do...
That's a hard decision to be in.
It is, it is.
But charity is allowed. Many of us do charity in many different ways, for many different reasons.
No, no, no problem. I did handout, we're gonna move into budget stuff. My handout didn't print correctly, so what I gave you is the beginning and the ending. My handout, didn't print correctly, so what I gave you is the beginning and the ending of the general fund. This is a cash flow statement, that is an internal report that we use for balancing and for budgeting and so on and so forth. Jennifer has been nice enough to print it correctly for me. Instead of having 30 pages with one line on each one, she's going to fix it for me. But nonetheless, what this is gonna demonstrate is, on the second sheet, at the bottom or at the top, if you will, the grant to all funds, you're gonna see on the top right-hand side, there's $7.63 million. So when you look at our bank accounts, that's the cash that we have. And that's not invested, that's just the cash that we have in our checking account. And the top of the first page, on the very far right, the ending balance for 730, is a million dollars. The difference between the two is what we have allocated towards all the different funds in their current budgets. So if you were to ask me today what we have in cash, it'd be the million dollars plus our investments. I don't have the investments because I couldn't figure out how to run this report correctly. But nonetheless, it is perspective. We, that's for the DTR. Now, the third page is the delinquent tax revolving fund. That I designed internally to show everything that I, that I work with. So we've got $2.3 million in cash and another $2 million invested. At the bottom, you'll see the tax foreclosure fund has $284,000 and the PRE fund has $89,000. So my working cash right now is $2.3 million. And that's what I would be using for dispersments, adjustments. Soon, what we're gonna have in September, the village settlements, which is usually only a couple hundred thousand dollars, but they have to draw it down a little bit. Upcoming, in some of our budget discussions, we're gonna draw down this number a little bit more to finish some of our projects that we have ongoing. But here in black and white is where we stand today as to what I have in there. I have probably additionally $2 million receivables for outstanding taxes. That would bring my total fund balance around with $6 million of the, we had discussed earlier. So while Jen prints off that report, we'll move into your revenue summary tab. VOC work session changes, page 1 of 7. I don't know if any of you guys are ready. You too, Val. The top line is the fund bounce forward, this is what we need to bring forward in order to balance the budget because we're required to present to you guys everything balanced. 402, current taxes. I'm estimating for 2020's levy for 9.447. If you look at the audited 2018, which is the second column from the left there, we came in at 9.363. Basically, I take Lori's 4028, 4029, the total taxable value for the county multiplied by our mileage. I subtract 5% for delinquencies, which has been our rolling average, and that's the number I plug. Every year, because of adjustments, because of sales, because of debt, so on and so forth, there's uncappings, some border review changes, we have come in higher. But based on our current taxable value, our current rule, that's what we anticipate. Below that, 402003 settlement adjustments. A few years ago, I wanted to separate that out from our current levy. So you guys have an idea of what to anticipate in March when I settle with you for any delinquencies. And we've been fairly consistent the past three years. And so I kept it at $250,000. It's a really hard tally to know exactly what we're gonna collect, but we've been fairly consistent there. Delinquent personal taxes, number 420. As the changes in laws have started to take into effect, we're having less and less being levied and more of the jurisdictions are writing off bad debt. Personal property taxes that have been levied have been uncollectible. So we're keeping that at $1,500, it's not a significant line item. Thank you, John.
Mm-hmm.
Trailer park, we haven't had any new ones, it's a fixed fee from the state, so we'll keep that at $600.
John?
Hmm?
Could you expand on that a little bit more? Since we have two trailer parks in the county?
Yes, yeah.
So this is all the taxes we get for all of the people living in those two trailer parks?
It's a, it's like a, it's a fee, like an association fee that they have to pay.
In lieu of paying...
No, there's still added alarm taxes that are assessed to the...
The whole piece?
The whole piece.
But the, so, but the added alarm taxes are being based on $3 a trailer still?
Yeah, it's still $3 a trailer.
So for all the services those trailer parks get, they'll pay $3?
My understanding is, is the parent parcel has the assessment with the improvements on it. So we get it from the owner of the trailer park because they're not individual splits, if you will, that are leasing. And it's, the trailers themselves are personal property, they're not real property. So it's just the state's way to generate some revenue.
Okay, but then the pieces, the parcels themselves aren't based on the value of 200 homes? It's just based on the parcel itself?
The parcel with the improvements, so it'd be the roads, the sewer, the, you know, whatever else is included, you know?
Right.
Yeah, correct. Swamp tax, the state has been in a position for the past five years that they're not acquiring any new properties. They've kind of been on a standstill, so that's gonna remain the same. Just recently, in 2017, we had 40 acres in the middle of the Cedar Swamp. Offered it to the state and they said no. And that's when I sold it to a conservancy. So we have, they're protected, but...
And they're swapping
Yes.
all the time, conservancy in the state, so...
Yes, yeah, so that number's gonna stay the same. The national park reimbursement, our pilt, obviously, they don't release the numbers until 60 days before they give us the money. So we're just putting in basically what we received for 2017 at the 133 because we have no idea what the appropriation will be and I don't want to overstate that. Commercial force reserve tax, again, something very small, but continues to come in, the $250. The local community stabilization share, we receive that twice a year. There hasn't been any new publications as to the 2019, 2020 dispersments. I'm leaving at $12,000, but I don't know how long we're gonna receive that. That's basically the state's fix for the personal property tax reduction. And there's probably gonna be a phase up on those, it's just a matter of when that fund runs out of money. Penalties on delinquent personnel. Now, as they get paid, we collect the penalties for the county allocated, senior services, dump them in there. Dog licenses, very consistent, $12,000. And then we jump into some other stuff that, outside of my office. Now, there's pistol permits from the sheriff, they've increased that to $3,000 this year. The past years, they've been at roughly $1,300 and $1,500 respectively, so I'm not sure if they anticipate an increase in application. Marriage licenses.
One would never know.
Yes, this is... I think you could probably do divorce fees more accurately than marriage licenses. FEMA, there's nothing coming from FEMA. The HMEP grant, I'm not sure which fund that comes from, is it?
We're still back on pistol permits and we're not thinking that that figure's gonna be correct?
No.
We gotta do a little more investigation into that.
I think the sheriff, when they did their revenues, was thinking that that was still their revenue and it's actually the portion of the new applicant's fingerprints?
That's come through.
And I've moved it to fingerprinting.
Okay.
So we're probably gonna have to make that zero.
I'll say, because they did up, up it and...
Yeah, yeah, no. They get $15 a application.
Okay.
So we'll change that.
So that, we may have to move that back down to the $1,500 in the balance.
Or zero, and then I'll have to look to see what's up in fingerprints.
Okay.
We'll just switch it over to fingerprints then.
So that $3,000 will really be zero?
We're thinking, we'll check it out for it.
Okay.
And then we'll add whatever was in there previously to the fingerprint line item. Which will be farther down, I think.
I don't know if you guys want...
What was your question?
If you guys want to take over from here, the 505, 100?
Under the fingerprint option, is that still money that's gonna come into the general fund, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, it'd just be titled differently.
Yeah, this pistol permit, like up till three years ago, before Michelle's new CPL fund, we used to put the pistol permit that the sheriff actually did collect a fee on, is that correct? And then the fingerprints to that same number, treating it as a new pistol permit. Once the CPL fund came into play, which is in '18, I noticed that the staff was still using this pistol permit number, not necessarily for the, because the sheriff no longer got it, but for the fingerprints. So I've now adjusted that in this year, that fingerprints is fingerprints, it's revenue to the sheriff, and then the CPL side is still ours.
Okay.
Me?
I'm the expert.
I'm not the expert. Okay, so you're at marriage licenses and then the FEMA grant we leave out because that's brought to you every fall for the year that it's in. So that's why there's no money revenue, there's no money in there. I believe Matt brings it to you like September-ish, and then the feds send us the money. Hemp grant, doesn't, doesn't have a change. I think we've always just done $1,200. We could bring it down if you wanted to, to $1,000, but it's just, that's probably what it was budgeted years ago and we just didn't change it for that, by that $200. The Region 7 is a cost share. Sometimes we're in charge of it, sometimes we're not, depending on which county takes over the bookkeeping. So in 1718, it was our bookkeeping. I don't believe in '19, it's our bookkeeping, but there may be revenue that comes in when Matt and Kelly travel and so then that county fiduciary sends us the funds to cover those expenses through the, through the state there.
Is that, you say that, is that the standardization probate or is it the...
No, that's the Region 7, so the 506001.
Sorry.
Sometimes we're the fiduciary, like I said, sometimes we're not, so it depends on the number and the travel. I don't believe, I know for '19, we're not the fiduciary agent, another county is. And the next one is the probate judge's salary. I haven't seen any correspondence through the state court administrator's office, I could have Michelle look into it. But the judge's salary has continually to increase over the past
Multiple streets that might probably last two years, I think, three years.
So it used to be 139.9 and then if you were to look at the non-union wage schedule, I'm not sure. I didn't get a memo just yet. It's usually in October that it changes. It's now up to about $146,000, I believe, for the salary. So you can see in 2018, our audited figure was 110.
That was our share.
So we've left it at 106, I mean, we certainly could, but I have not seen a memo on our state court administrator's side to state if 110 really is the revenue. So we've, we leave it flat at 106. Standardization probate, the same thing, comes from court administration office, and so we've left that the same as well. It looks like, though, the trend is, on the last two years, we could up that to, or decrease it if we wanted to, 45, 7, 24.
So we're gonna change that?
If you'd like to, it's up to you, like I stated, it's really up to you. I wasn't anticipating changing the probate court's salary, but if you wanted to bring that up to 110 and then you'd bring the next one down to 45, it's really up to you. I usually, we usually just leave these the same and let them, but that's up to you. Does anybody know? I have to say leave them. Leave them?
No one's saying anything, so we'll just go with...
Well, yeah, I mean, I would put them at what the reality is rather than giving them the way it is.
I'll contact SCAO and see if there's anything on the horizon. When we talk about the court, in this context, we're talking about the state court administrator's office.
Like the hemp grant would be at $1,000 and, you know, the fingerprinting one or the pistol would be zero.
Mm-hmm. We got that.
Even local community stabilization, you know, that, looks like that should be zero as well. Is that what you were talking about, that 441?
We can bring that down to zero because, like I said, I don't have any further confirmation that we're gonna receive a '19 payment. We received the second half of '18 payment in February, which reflects that $2,300 in the third column. So '19, I'm not sure.
Well, I'm just saying they should reflect, you know, what actually is gonna happen rather than what happened before.
Yeah.
We're making notes.
I do too, but...
I'd make notes, I'm...
That's perfectly fine.
I don't think zero's a real number, there's gotta be something if it's the personal property fix from the state, there's gotta be something.
There's just nothing published for...
Right. So it's, it's a guess, whatever number we want to plug in there, it's probably just...
Well, if we do move it to zero, what we would do is increase the fund bounce forward and if we got that revenue, we just wouldn't draw off the fund bounce, so it's gonna become a kind of like a... So whatever your comfort level is, for all of you, it's okay.
Well, I just think it should be tracked. If we put zero and it doesn't come in, we'll say, oh, well, but yet we're owed it from the state, so... We put a number in there and we don't get it, at least we realize that, like for tracking, I would leave at least something in there.
Well, I mean, it's gonna be tracked, I mean, you can add zero.
I mean, it are, for five years, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, so it says 2,300 so far this year, so put something like that in there instead of zero, or 2,400? Just as a gap, that's fine, 2,400.
2,400 for 441.
All right, next page is page two, circuit court stabilization. We did move that up to the 14.6 number, which was the audited figure for '18. District court is not a number that Michelle and I would have. So if you want to bump that down to the previous years, you certainly can, it looks like we've already received 50%. So that would be a change to 91.45.
I'd like to...
Which line are you on?
It's all right, 542, it's the second line down.
And you're gonna go down to what?
91.45.
9100, 91.45.
It probably is more realistic.
Mm-hmm.
543, John, that's one of your different kind of... I'm not sure, I don't know what that represents, this started only within the last four years.
I'll have to follow up.
So he'll follow up on 543, because it's 1,500 and then 4,200, so the expectation, somewhere in the middle, and that's left the same. Secondary Road Patrol is a grant, I believe that's coming to you here in August, for next year's budget, because the state fiscal is different than ours. The number that I changed this to for this year, for 2020, is actually the amount that we're, our grant year was for in 19. So if they are going to increase it, I believe he's coming to you, we may know before we go to publish, but I typically put what your grant year revenue is from the previous year.
And remember, when you're looking at that, that budget runs about 107,000. So what you're getting is about, what do we say, 30, 36, 37,000?
Did it say, it said audited 32.5, basically.
That's your money coming in, but your expenditure going out for that department for 18, for audited, was 103,000.
Right. They only cover a third of it.
They only cover, as time goes by, it's less and less.
They used to, yes, now, this is here, it's .33.
At one time, they did provide full funding for that, did they not, or pretty close to full funding?
No, it's never been full funding, but.
I think that was fast cop. Oh, wasn't it fast cop?
Fast cop, it's just like marine and a lot of those TNT, but with time, the funding's just dried up.
But I thought it was going down every year, seems to be, and so, wouldn't it be at 32.5, or 32?
No, they stated, there was a memo that had come through to the sheriff, and so it's, that they did it after the budgets were all turned in, that they increased our allocation to 36.9.
Okay.
So that is what we're to get for the year. The Marine Safety Program is, falls in line with EMS, where the Marine Safety Program, actually this past spring, you just approved this year's budget, or this year's revenue, so we do not plug the Marine Safety Grant in here as part of an anticipated revenue. The drug and drunk case flow is reports that are sent from the State Court, or from District Court and Circuit Court to the state, and that is, depending on volume, so we leave 5,300 in there. We could certainly up it if you wish, as it's already got 4,600, but it really based is, based is, it is based on caseload, how many drunk drivers.
So moving it down really does not.
Is that through a pound, too?
You can move it up.
Even if it's a pound, too?
Yep, or a canoe.
So what would be, would 7,000 be more realistic?
I think if you wanted to increase it to seven, that would be a, I mean, this year, you're already at, you're six months in, and you're at 4,600, so I would think that seven would be feasible number, if that's what you're looking for.
Is that, are we hearing consensus that you'd like us to increase it?
Yes, yes.
7,000?
Three-year average would be 8,400.
So still conservative number, 7,000.
If we expect to receive an additional 46 this year.
What was the answer?
10,000.
Yes, 7,000.
Okay.
Sorry.
The juvenile officer's salary, we'll have to make a note, I typically don't go back and look at the revenues if they're higher than audited, or what's budgeted, but 40 was definitely not budgeted. So I'm not sure why it represents the 40 there, but 27 is what I would go with. The Protective Vest is a request that also coincides with the Sheriff's Department in their capital outlay, so they're requesting, I believe it's a 50% match, and that's in his narrative.
Where does that come from?
That's a federal grant.
Okay.
Yep. Trial court funding, same thing, status quo at 55, one year less, one year more, so we leave it the same. Jury fees reimbursement is kind of an iffy one, we do leave it in there at 3,500, it is based on the number of times that we have trials, and when we, even if the trial doesn't go through, we issue reports to the state on the District Court level and the Circuit Court level, if people were paid, their mileage, how many attended, that kind of thing. So for 19, you can see District Court doesn't have any revenue, or us, but it's also because that could mean that last fall, we didn't have any trials, where we called people, so it depends on if they're going to go to trial or not. This year, we've already called 150 jurors just for us, so that would be later on. This 563.008 anti-abuse drug, we don't typically budget for this, we've been discussed, it's been discussed in the past, that this could be, whereas they do the flyby, the drive over, or flyover, and so it's just a sporadic number that they send us. The next line item, 563.301, is basically an additional revenue and/or expense on the sheriff's side for sting operations that the state wants to put through, or have, like, us implement, and so for 2020, the sheriff is saying there aren't any. The 564, it comes from the state, the prosecutor's office is notified of that number, and that's why they plug what they do. So, again, that's not a number that we have, or they put that number in there, we don't. Same with Title 5E, or Title 4, Title 4E, I guess.
4E.
570 Victims' Rights, this is also a number that comes from the prosecutor's office.
Let's go back, when you go back up to 564, the Title 4D reimbursement, to up from where we are, those now have corresponding departmental expenditures, okay, because that's our Title 4D program underneath the prosecutor's office, and that is its own budget, am I not correct?
No, it's not its own budget.
It's not its own budget, we have associated costs with personnel.
Correct.
5E, we don't really have too much, because Patty's handling, in the prosecutor's office, Patty's handling the 4E, and it's becoming very difficult to get, well, not the reimbursements, but to have the expenditures that qualify for the reimbursements, you know, the qualifications are really becoming stringent. Title 4D is a little bit easier, it's your DS, your DP type of cases that they handle through. Stacy Lamb is the employee that handles the 4D paternity cases, people that are referred, maybe they're on assistance, and with after birth and delivery costs, and it's to establish parentage for a child, and stuff like that, so, sorry, go ahead.
Convention and tourism is John.
Convention and tourism is a state, state number, so basically, we're going to see a reduction of 11,000 roughly for next year.
So, Matt, the county doesn't have a, the county has no tax, but the county could tax?
No, because we don't qualify because of the number of citizens. You have to be, I think, 50,000 or 60,000, as far as population, in order to do our convention tourism type tax, to my knowledge.
Even on rooms, considering where we, you know, the population that we have in the summer?
I looked at it, because Kent County just introduced an ordinance that would make all Airbnbs and BRBOs fall under the convention tourism tax, and for them to be able to do that, it was a qualification of the number of residents in the county. So beyond that, I don't know, I just know that we did not qualify.
Actually, the shuttle property is in a tourism tax base, based on a decision made 20 years ago, I think, 20, 30 years ago, by the township to be part of the grant that was chosen, so there's no revenue being collected, but in theory, I think that's the one, the new economy, that's a tie into the grant that was coming, so the township issue.
Is that grandfathered, or is that loophole, is that the way you can do it?
That, I don't know, I bet. But I know, talking to Trevor Tocash, who's head of that, there is, John's right, we don't qualify because of our population, there's a form of that has to be.
You missed that part.
And then the, I believe, the hotels have to agree, there's a legal process you have to go through, but we just don't qualify.
Even on short-term rentals?
No, yeah, that is not part of the current tax structure. The laws would have to be changed, and there's some talk about that, because of the huge controversy, but that could be a statewide issue, because there is discussion of doing it statewide, and giving, locally, it's a government option to do that. Because the hotel is saying, this is not fair, we're being tasked with that. And some of those taxes in some areas are pretty high. You look at your hotel bill, like, $100 a night.
Yeah.
So could you have a campground, too? Do you have campgrounds, big?
Not now.
But I thought that, wasn't that called the COLO tax, and I thought that was?
COLO hall tax.
Yeah, that was eliminated, that?
It was, once that was paid off, COLO hall was paid off, they turned it over to the convention tourism tax.
Okay, so it's, they still continue it?
Yeah.
Never go away. Exactly. That's your, never go away.
Oh, did he Google it? You mean the 2,000?
Uh-huh.
I think it's just a number that we threw in there after 17.
Survey and remon, so that's a number we get from Laurel Mountain.
Trudy.
Trudy, no, that's a, we did it for one year.
You did it for one year, okay. Liquor license, it's basically user fees designated by the state, they publish annually, so just going on historical values, put 24,000 in, it's the county's portion of the liquor licenses that are issued in our county.
It just comes in late in the year.
The liquor licenses, yes, it does come late in the year. Circuit Court costs, RIT fees, motion fees, District Court costs, this is all based on user fees and collections that we do for fees on both sets of the courts. The next one is Circuit Court entry fees.
Let me skip down a few, we're on page three, we're down about?
608, we're, one, two, three, four, five, yep, 608.001. So again, the Circuit Court entry and jury fees, these are actually all reports that are filed within the clerk's office after year end or quarter end, and then that's the monies, depending on which report style it is, comes in. District Court civil fees, that's going to be a court generated from the State Court Administrator's Office. Your cost share, this is the total regarding the District Court Administrator. And at the time that I printed this, I did not have next year's, I don't know next year's allocations, it goes, it does go by between the two, by the three courts, the percentage of cases, so I think, like, right now, ours is a 9%, Antrim's 11, and then Grand Travis is the rest, so right now, I just currently have rolled that number from what I know in 19 into 20. It may be a little higher, it wouldn't be less. Probate court services, again, this family division, that all comes in from state payments and so forth. Guardianship services is a service they provide upstairs, as well as the inventory fees. Inventory fees is a calculation that Susan has regarding a probate in the state, so if you come in without a will or a testing, they take the inventory, and there's a price for what your will is worth, or your estate is worth.
Jennifer?
Yes.
The guardianship services comes from the state?
I don't believe, no, I believe 1103 and 1105 are both services that are provided by the probate court, so when, when there's a guardianship service that Susan has to, I believe, assist with, there's a fee involved.
Who pays that?
The client, the person that's filing for the guardianship report. My guess is that it's $75 a time, or maybe it's only 25, I'm not sure.
Yeah. First fees to do that, probably.
I'm assuming we're talking adult guardianship, not foster care?
No. I would think that it's adult guardianships, because that's what Susan deals with, are the adults, as a rule.
Yeah, there's a difference there.
And a lot of these, you know, whether it be Circuit Court entry fees, District Court, it's all for services provided to get those case goes, go away to maintain those bases. And we can, I can highlight that number and just go ask her for sure.
It's too small to worry about, I was just curious.
Yeah. The next one is going to be in between with the clerk and the registered deeds, typically, when this was set up, the 612s, these were all clerk functions, so the only thing that's changed is passports are now done through the register of deeds. So each one of these line items is a clerk function, even into the state bar and the campaign finance. I don't think there's any questions in those?
Yes, we have one late fee last year, who was that?
A campaign late fee, it was in a school board.
Oh, I honestly don't remember who I charged. Sometimes I'm just not as nice as John, it's the fee, and you know, you used to be able to be a little lenient on that, and I was a little lenient, like a lot of them, but a citizen from Elmwood Township took exception with their opponent, and turned me in for not assessing a fee to the state, so now I pay everyone. Okay, everyone gets fined.
Just let us know, I was just curious.
I have been known to find commissioners, too.
Well, that's good.
So the next one on this next page is on page four, again, as a clerk fee, we still maintain and do pictures, either for passports or visas, for people traveling, so that's, so that number stayed the same. It looks like for passport reimbursements for postage, Dorothy runs on the smaller side, so that's why there's not a number there.
Tax certificates are when a deed is about to be recorded as a warranty deed, or it is presented to the treasurer's office to make sure that there are no back taxes on it, before they transfer it. That's based on volume, so that stays the same. Tax history is increased by individuals, and again, that's based by volume, people just come in, ask for mass lists of information, and we're required to charge them for the Return and check charges from the treasurer, unfortunately, that seems to be trending up, hopefully we can stop that, but that's really just out of our, out of our hands, but that's a revenue that we collect for bounce checks.
John, before you go to the next one, in answer to Commissioner Ann Sargis' question, when you're looking through your budget packet, and you get to the section of Family and Probate Court, what they did this time, because they have an employee request in there, is they have attached their whole fee schedules from all their services, or at least relative to probate, for sure, and it will show you, like, a petition and application for probate or appointment of a personal representative, $150, civil fee, civil filing fee, of course, that would stay with the county most of it, but it shows you what the fee is and what the distribution is, how much is county fee, how much goes to the state. the state, and they've listed that in the back of here for all their guardianships as well.
Registered deed services and transfer tax, MSSR fees, website fees.
Shouldn't we look at that, that six fourteen oh two and raise that to three hundred thousand?
It was Dorothy's request to keep it conservative. If you look at year to date, we were on pace to do two seventy. So it is volume-based. To jump to three thirty, I think would be a little aggressive.
Well, if you go to two seventy, if you just take what she's got in, it's...
That's, that's fine with me.
John, going back up to registered deed services, what's in there, do you know?
These are, schedules of fees mandated by the state for processing deeds, they're required to charge thirty dollars per recording with the, for up to five pages. And so again, it's kind of a volume-based, it's just a number of deeds are being recorded. Transfer tax is based on a dollar a mile.
So we change, did we change the transfer tax to two seventy, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yes, your chairman?
The reason why she keeps it conservative is you don't have any idea what the volume is going to be, or two, what the valuation is going to be in any given year, so she underestimates.
So, so in backup to the registered deeds, these are her passport fees?
Okay, which number are you talking about?
Someone just asked about.
Okay, so six one four oh oh one, registered deed services, those are recording fees that are collected when documents are recorded. Six one four oh oh two, the county portion of real estate transfer tax that is collected from the sale of property when a document is recorded. The MSSR fee is one point five percent of the state remonumentation fee that is retained by the county when a document is recorded.
And then her website fees?
Huh?
Then her website fees?
And then her website fees is revenue collected from the fees to search and print documents from the registered deeds, document inquiry website.
Right, and that one, actually, we just increased all the fees to it, so, I mean, we're, we're at fifty-six thousand now if you look at it. So I think that could be raised to fifty thousand.
That'd be high.
That's fifty now?
Fourteen oh five.
Does that, like, everyone or at least four of you are agreeing?
What is that noise?
I don't know.
It's my phone vibrating.
Oh, is it being picked up by the microphone?
Yeah, it must be, yes. Sorry, I never heard of it.
It goes to a beat anyway.
Absolutely.
The IRS fees, that's relatively new. You have the IRS.
IRS.
It's new.
IRS would be, the registered deeds IRS is when the, literally, like, the IRS is putting a lien, they're filing paperwork onto the property.
That's right. Just want to make sure that I was right on that.
Say that again.
So the IRS will send through the United States Treasury or the Internal Revenue Service a request to record a lien against property.
Okay.
And she just pointed it off as a...
Yep, we've always pointed it off. It comes in electronically, so it's a different revenue source for them. Direct deposit, I should say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what you're saying is property owners should periodically review, you know, liens that may have come to their properties and they don't know about it.
It has, there has been in the past, it doesn't happen very often, but I've seen it over the years, the unemployment agency will do the same. They will, the state will send us, the state will send money to John.
And they usually give notice that they're having that placed on them.
Well, they could have moved.
But they, and they could have moved, and they may not read the mail either.
Right.
We had one this, this year that Michelle and I both had to deal with. It was all my fault that the IRS and the state of Michigan put liens on this gentleman's property and he was trying to sell it. And he wanted me to release the liens, and he didn't understand the word jurisdiction very well.
I, myself, recently discovered that there was a lien on my property from years ago, and fortunately for me, the records were available, we had saved these records from grandparents.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
And I had proof and was able to clear it up, but it took me a long time and a little bit of money to do that, so, just a FYI for y'all.
Well, and sometimes with these people, the case that John's referencing, I understand the frustration to coming to us and wanting to take it out on us, but if you've paid your taxes, you've got really no one to blame but yourself. That's how this happens.
Yeah. Anyway, it was interesting. It was interesting. Six one eight zero zero one, addresses and ordinances, these are planning and driven by users, you know, that could go up, but it's inconsequential. I have no idea what planning commission services are.
We don't either. I've highlighted to see why they took in two thousand.
There aren't any.
Last year.
There aren't any planning commission services? I didn't know, do you serve on the planning commission?
No.
No? Oh, Melinda does. I didn't know if maybe they just plan review or something. Cause they do a plan review? They run those, they bring the speakers and it's every piece fifteen dollars to come here, a speaker, we have the seminars.
Yeah, they do charge sometimes.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Okay.
Okay, that must be what that was. I'm making a note, we'll find out, cause that's kind of just to double check.
Bail bond is a fee that they collect next door, as well as the sheriff's services are things that come through their foot traffic. MDOC transports reimbursed when our jail takes somebody or has to pick up on the MDOC inmate that's there, they reimburse us. Convicted driver assessment, I think that's a state.
It is, and I think that's through district court.
Yep, the sex offender registration fee is collected by the sheriff's office and is gone through there, transmittals back over here. So again, sadly, foot traffic in that one. Appreciation fee?
No, apprehension.
Or apprehension fee, sorry.
Definitely not appreciated.
No, definitely not appreciated. I actually don't know where that one comes from.
That would be through the friend of the court apprehension.
But I meant, does it come right through to John?
Could be, well, double check that one. No one's ever asked us about that. And it's been a while since I've talked about it.
Live scan fingerprinting is next door at the sheriff's department, the clerk's office can do the receipt, again, like I talked about in the new CPL applications, and then they also run them over there for teachers and so forth for background checks. Name changes, you get them done here. Copy please.
CDLs, are you?
CPLs?
CDLs.
Oh, CDLs.
Is that the one you're going to raise up then?
Yes, I'm going to take a look at that, because it already has a thousand twenty-eight, so I would, I would think last year was fifteen hundred, so I think that one we could move to three if you're comfortable with that.
But you had talked about for the, for the...
Sheriff pistols?
Yes.
That's going to be zero next year.
And you were going to put that down into fingerprinting, I thought you said?
Yes, but for some reason, the sheriff marked the number to three thousand. We won't be, we would mark this number to three, to, yeah, to like fifteen hundred.
Okay.
Are we changing it?
Yes, so six twenty-seven oh one five.
It's the third, fourth line, the live scanning fingerprint.
Okay, we're changing that to what?
One thousand five hundred. I was thinking the next one would go to nineteen thousand.
I'm sorry, what was that? Copy fees? I'm, I'm comfortable with upping that, we haven't upped it in a number of years, but I'm comfortable if you want to, to bring it up to twenty-two. It's copy fees that are done by each of the offices here for a customer. So that is what we run into in our daily work when we make a copy, it's fifty cents a page.
Okay, so we'll go to twenty-two thousand on that?
Sure. Typically, what John does in that revenue is he, he likes to send the revenues out and then he tries to get an estimate from what the departments do, but a lot of times they skip over that line.
They put zero.
When you send them, they put zero. So we've left it at seventeen, so that's a good trend.
Yeah.
And we might have in the clerk's office, on our court files, we can actually go into our electronic filing, and I can email recipients certain copies for fifty cents a page, even though it's going via email. So if they want a twenty-five page judgment or copies of something, it's fifty cents a page.
If we're allowed to charge for it.
If we're allowed, allowed.
If we are allowed to charge for it.
Well, anything with the court.
It's fifty cents.
Unless they're, they're indigent, there are court rules that govern what we can. Now, the per page fee, the fifty cents that we charge per copy, if it's outside of statute, that all, whether it be me or John or someone charges, if it's outside of statute, that fifty cents per page is set by the Board of Commissioners. So an example would be a judgment of divorce, if you want a certified copy, it's ten dollars for the first page, a dollar for each additional page. If they come in and they just want a photocopy of it, then that fee is going to revert to you and it's fifty cents a page, so you control that fifty cents per page. And it was, it was done for a couple reasons. When it was initially set up, we have very good copy machines here, we have a lot of copy machines, we make a lot of copies, but we didn't want to also be in the market of necessarily encouraging the public to come in and say, hey, will you make a copy of this document? Because that's wear and tear on our, on our machines.
I was more in line with where we are required to give them something.
PTOs.
You know, by statute, we're not going to charge them.
No, 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 no.
So when you charge fifty cents a page, even though you're just forwarding it by email?
It's a court, it's a case, it's a court document.
A court document, is that, are we covering your cost of pulling that up and hitting that button, basically?
You're, you're paying for the copies as if they would have come in, because, just because we can do it electronically is not a reason to waive the fee, and that's what a lot of people do.
Well, is it a reason to have a lower fee if it's sent electronically?
No, it's still, it's still a lot to make sure you go through and get the right documents.
Okay, so we're covering the professionalism?
You're covering, yes, you're covering the expense, right, right. So if it is coming in that way, that it's electronically and I'm emailing it, I've taken the phone call, I've looked it up, I've done the credit card over the phone, I've done a regular receipt, and now I'm ready to prepare the email as I've gotten their address, typed it out, and then sent the document to them that way.
All the work is on the front end, is what you're saying.
It's similar with my tax rules, if they wanted to link with tax rules, it's mandated by state, it doesn't matter if it's an email, fax, or mail requests, it's not subject to FOIA where they can get it for free, they have to actually pay for it, and they send them qualified data file, you know, based on their request, whether it's PDF or an Excel or whatever, and they have to give me the money upfront, and off it goes.
Okay, a lot of what the elected officials do, at least in John's office, and mine, and Beavis' similar in district court, although we all, we maintain public records, not all of them are subject to FOIA. They can have them for the coming in and asking, but they can't request them through FOIA.
Okay.
It'll be denied. But they can just come in and ask, and sometimes they think that they have to ask for FOIA because we'll even get it from attorneys, well, I'm going to request it under FOIA, well, I'm going to deny your request, why don't you just ask me for it? And a lot of times, it costs them more to go through FOIA, but we can't tell them that. If they want to go through FOIA and it's legitimate to go through FOIA, we will, or if they just would have come in and asked, one, they may have gotten it for free, but now because they've requested under FOIA, we're going to charge them thirty bucks.
The next one is mapping services for equalization, you can go ahead and take that down to a hundred. One of the reasons for that is, it was left at five hundred for previous years, and equalization, we found out that they were actually putting bonus to the general fund, putting the majority of their mapping services that were actually through the mapping fund was the revenue coming in through here. So that's why last year you see thirty-five, this year you see thirty. So the, the other fund, the five seventy-three is the mapping fund, and we can look at that and make sure that that revenue corresponds. Animal control services, that's your agreement with Grand Travis County. Before we move along, on the six fourteen zero zero five, I think it was mentioned, you know, that we are increasing those fees, and she asked recently for that increase, and because she's been getting more, shouldn't we go up on that?
You did it to fifty.
Yeah, well, I asked to go to fifty.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I, I had a question mark by it, so.
And I think she was increasing one fee, if I remember correctly, but decreasing something else.
She had that in there.
And so I think it, fifty would probably be comfortable.
Yeah, yeah. Is that a correct?
Yeah. Thank you. Postage reimbursed, we just leave these two, publications, I'm actually not really sure, but six forty-five postage reimbursed, we typically don't budget, I mean, high in this number, that's why we leave it at forty. I know in our office, in the clerk's office, that I can tell you that the majority of the fee that might be coming here is from the married couple out of state that wants us to expedite them a marriage application so they can get it back without having to pay the hundred dollar fee to waive the three-day law.
So they'll pay us to overnight it.
So they'll, so we'll collect the fee over the phone, and then we take it to the post office and mail it to them. And then they turn around and spend the other twenty-five to send it back to us, so instead of a hundred, they spent fifty. But that's what, kind of what's, yeah, the postage reimbursement comes through, it transmittals within the offices. I'm not sure what publications are, unless that's something that used to be done in the board office or something, I'm not sure.
Yeah, for Joyce.
Now, that's an interesting one that we can look at is on district court bond forfeits, because that, that is not something that I myself am an expertise at, so we can ask Carol Stocking what that number is and if we could up that.
It depends, I would think, on the bonds that the court issues and...
And who gets forfeited on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think we could put it four thousand.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting, the trend over the last two years, yeah.
And we only got permission so far this year.
Right.
Right, what I'm, what I'm seeing in circuit court, do you want us to check first on that?
We'll check, yeah.
I think you have a good idea.
What I'm seeing in circuit, I had a bond that really needed to be forfeited, and there was so much arguing between the person that posted it, the defendant, and everyone, I finally talked to the judge, as elbow was forfeited, we, instead of taking it to our general fund, we just applied it to their costs, trying to just damage control so that we didn't pick the person up on even more warrants. So you just never know with those.
The reimbursement for district court credit card revenue, I think, John, if you want to make a note on this one, this is a new implementation with Grand Travis County where their district courts are actually going through a third party.
Government-to-government cloud solutions.
Yep, and so I believe we will be putting a revenue item, a number in there, because we want to have sent that to Carol. So...
So far...
So far in nineteen, nothing's come in, though.
No, but I just got an email from Grand Travis County for the distribution.
Okay.
First, first quarter was forty-four hundred, second quarter, and this is, you know, just yesterday I got this information, second quarter was fifty-one hundred, and third quarter was fifty-one hundred, so...
But is that our portion, or are they only going to give of us?
Third quarter.
Are we only going to get eleven to ten percent, ten to eleven percent?
That's what I don't know. I got to look at this because it says total quarterly shareback amount is fifty-one twenty-seven, government-to-government cloud solutions shareback amount is three hundred dollars. So I'm not sure if I'm getting the three hundred dollars or if I'm getting... So I'm not sure if I'm getting the three hundred dollars or if I'm getting fifty-one. So I gotta see what uh Grand Travis actually sent us and match it up to this report.
So they'll get back to us on that one?
Yeah, we'll, we'll put something in there.
The next number's John's.
Next number's mine. Did you up it?
I didn't up it, you upped it. It wasn't me.
Um, I, obviously, we, we exceed what I budget. The problem is, I have no idea what we're going to have in the bank account next year, and I, that's why I kept it at a low number. Uh, it's not so much market fluctuations as it is cash needs. The travel balance that Joan was so nice to crank out, it's just a short one.
Yep, I didn't, I didn't give that to them.
You didn't give that to them, alright.
It's just for you, but you can tell them.
Yes. Um, let's see, now, you didn't get it, we, that goes back to the, that, uh, one point one nine dollars of income cash. That's in my checking account at Huntington, that's what we use to make our credit checks, our payroll, so on and so forth. I've got two million dollars uh in a money market account, that's where the bulk of this income is coming from.
So we're going to leave it at forty thousand?
I'm comfortable with that, I, I'm more conservative, you know, with revenues because if we're going to draw it down now uh for the upcoming projects, it's going to come from that money market and that's a significant portion of the revenue. Uh, the balance, I've got about seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars invested in CDs and bonds and so on and so forth, um, which is a small percentage of the revenue that are coming, that's coming in, so. It's really the money that um I'm taking away from checking, and I'm, I'm trying to keep it at a million dollars. Because that's, millions, a million and a half is what our operating needs are for month-to-month basis. Um, but now that we're starting collections, I'll be able to shift a little bit more over to the money market account until we do a drawdown. But, um, yeah, I'm conservative and would leave it at forty. I upped it from...
Well, it's doubled what it was, so...
Yeah.
I mean, year-to-date, we're already at seventy.
Yeah. I don't know.
I just realized this draft.
He, he is, he would not be comfortable with you increasing that.
I, I've heard that, thanks.
I'm just saying, we, we...
I, I'm actually, I agree with John, you know, uh...
This is my rainy day money, cow.
Once we get through, you know, and we are able to land at some point, then we can, you know...
If, as soon as we stabilize and get our cash flow on a predictable basis, then I can forecast. But if my money market goes down to zero, your interest is going to go back down to about, you know, fifteen, twenty, right?
And in good position, because even if you do put it low, we're just, to balance the budget, based on what you tell us, we're, we have the luxury to be able to pull from our fund balance. And all it means is if he's too low, and comes in higher, we're just going to pull that much less from the fund.
And that's why we rolled, what, four million into the fund balance as of, at the end of last year? I mean, it's, it's just that strategy of going long revenue, as high as expenditures.
It's just accounting at this point.
Yes.
Really.
Um, let's see, we do not budget for miscellaneous reimbursements or sale of FISDAX act assets. We do not budget for contributions and donations. The sheriff's overtime special events, this is what they bill out, um, any time that they agree to do the events such as the M twenty-two challenge or anything like that. I'm pretty sure it's probably a hot topic, but I won't bring up the Iron Man, because I'm not sure if there'll be any revenue for that or not. But, um, typically, it's the same events every year that they do, and so that's why it stays consistent, as, as you can see, and the time of year. On the K nine specific, that actually rolled because I had amended that budget this year, so that fifty dollars will be zero. Because we don't do donation, we, like I said, we don't um budget donations, yeah. Um, then we're down to stop grant, um, that was where Michelle was talking um in the previous meeting that we are not doing a revenue, nor do we have a corresponding expense for the contractual services of a stop grant through the Women's Resource Center. Again, donation, uh, or, I'm sorry, Leland Town, Leland County Township Officer. Um, the ninety-three one forty-seven is the actual cost that we have budgeted into um that um currently. And that on paper correlates expense-wise as to what I brought forward to you for personnel. But we do do a difference between the rental on the car and how many miles they drive it. And so, as you can see over the previous years, the numbers, they do vary. It's not always what the budget is anticipated that our expenses. Because I'm not, on the expense side, I'm not doing how many miles they've driven, I've done the car rental, I've done the gas. We use the IRS rate to get that money, retrieve that money back for them. We don't charge them if it breaks down and needs a new tire, those kind of things, we absorb that.
Most of it comes late in the year?
Um, actually, well, what happens is, in this regard, is when this is run for budget purposes, the first quarter's the only one they've been billed. The second quarter would be um April, May, and June, and these are run then, so the money's probably come in in July, but these books are, I centered them on the finalization of June. So that's why you're only going to see one quarter. Um, Sutton's Bay, uh, Parks and Recs donations, again, we don't do anything for that. Sutton's Bay Village Officer, um, again, matches the um, the correlating expense there. Indirect cost recovery.
Why is that zero so far this year?
Nope, I'm sorry, that's, that's why I skipped that one, too, you gotta skip Parks and Rec.
No, but you're not, no donation.
Um, oh!
The village has not sent in their money yet, and so we sent a follow-up bill.
So they didn't pay us for the first quarter yet?
They had invoice, they had personnel, we're just, they want it.
It's not...
We're not worried about it.
Okay.
Um, indirect cost for front of the court is the space that they have upstairs in the Probate and Family Court. Each year, we do the cost allocation plan, it's always a year behind, um, and so I changed it to the four four oh five um because on our cost allocation plan, the expenses were less in that sense of that general overview. And that would be that they help pay for um the things that are caught, not, that can be cost allocated to them, just like we do for, except they, so they're going to bill and then they're sending us back in, it's just written this way. The other ones, we do transfers internally. Um, in-house computer services, when equalization um runs tax bills and so forth for the township levels, I believe, is what that is.
We've had, you know, a few turnover, um, Treasurers, Glen Arbor, and Almont, um, so they may have been picking, picking up their own printing rather than outsourcing it to an equalization, and so, or reduced it from eighteen thousand to fifteen thousand.
And when it comes late in the year?
Well, after the bills have been issued, so, again, the June thirtieth, those haven't been quite issued yet, or the bill for the billing hasn't been issued yet. Paper Hit BSNA Internet Services is kind of like what the ROD does with uh online access. This is more tailored for title agents, attorneys, um, so on, that want to just go online, get what they need, and not call in and make a formal request. So it's just ease of access for them. And it's free to the homeowner.
They can look at their own, yeah.
Yeah, they can look at their own and see where they're at.
Well, I was just wondering with the um, with the instruct, construction codes going online.
You can see that with that.
That, but will that increase if you guys, no?
That's a separate, they pay for the applications and the permits and so on and so forth, but the information is posted under the actual, so if you pull up, for instance, my parcel, you'll see my current taxes, my previous taxes, and then below that, all the permits that I pulled to build the house and the pole barn and so on and so forth. Um, so it's all consolidated on one page.
Thank you.
Ladies, back to you.
Are we on elections reimbursed?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we increase that, next year, we should have a presidential primary that is really, I can't tell you if we'll have one. If we do, we should be reimbursed, at least for costs that are associated strictly with the presidential primary. Not anything that we piggyback on that. Also, if there's anything that I can bill outside jurisdictions, it's very limited as to why I can bill them. Um, I can't bill them for my time or my staff's time, and it's significant, but we've got a good working relationship, so I, I, that's just a guess. It is just a guess.
Um, if I can ask, what does our two thousand sixteen election cost look like? Because we don't have, we've got seventeen, but...
You only have seventeen, I got reimbursed in seventeen, which was for a lot of sixteen at twenty-seven thousand.
Okay, so we don't know what the cost was for election?
No, it would have been, um, I didn't bring that with me for sixteen, I didn't know what it is and I can certainly get it, but the, the money that would have been received in seventeen was probably mostly for sixteen cost, not for seventeen.
Um, can you bring up the information so that we can have maybe an educated, uh, view what your request may be for that?
Sure.
But it says that you've only budgeted forty-five hundred dollars for elections this year?
Up for...
Twenty-five.
For, don't, I've only budgeted to receive reimbursement from outside jurisdictions, this is just the revenue coming in to offset our costs.
That's not how it works.
It's natural expenditure.
Awesome.
So I can, I can get that, Ted. Um, attorney reimbursement fees, although it would be tempting to increase that from twenty-five thousand, um, there is, with the MIDC adoption of that and their standards, technically, there is some standards out there where the counties are supposed to be sending to the state a certain percentage of the reimbursements for court-appointed attorneys. MIDC has not written the guidelines to do this, so I've talked with Carol Stocking, and we right now are not about to reimburse the money because it talks about indigents, it talks about partially indigent, fully indigent, but there's been no guidelines to determine what that is. And we're picking up the cost, and there's a lot of hoops with this MIDC, and a lot of things that aren't tying together very well. So we're reluctant till we probably get slapped forward money onto the state and give this up because there's no timeframe. When MIDC came in, then we had to implement, we only had so many days to implement after the passage of our budget. Um, it doesn't seem to me that if we get five thousand dollars in court attorney fees reimbursed, that was prior to MIDC, that the state should be entitled to that money. And even though we, we collected it in the MIDC timeframe, that just doesn't seem right. And so, what all the counties or a majority of them are holding out on is, well, you say to give it to us, but you haven't followed your part of the deal and created all the, the steps we need to do. So to increase this, just because we're at nineteen thousand right now, it, it's just going to give you two thoughts of a number because they're pretty aggressive in lancing with this MIDC stuff. They're, they're really aggressive, so...
Do we have a liability risk here?
No. There's no penalty written in there, so you don't send it, what are they going to do, withhold your funding? They're already threatening to withhold your funding if you don't spend all your county money before you spend the money that they send you, which is going to be very interesting because we've had to put standards in place. We were already getting court-appointed attorneys. Michigan was ranked the worst state for indigent representation in the country, there's a report that goes back seven, several years ago. But the Thirteenth Circuit, which we're part of, we were the best of the worst, we were getting it done. So, what's the risk?
I just want to know that we were at risk.
No, because once we send that money, and if we send it in there, it's going to be too hard to get it back.
Exactly.
But no, I would never put you at risk, I'm watching it.
You know, are they, you know, could they come back and say, you know, you owe us for twenty years' worth of?
No.
You know what I mean?
No, they can't, because that money's already gone. But the point is, is if I'm collecting on a felon whose case just got appealed through the process from nineteen ninety-seven, and now just three months ago, the decision came in, and all those attorney fees have been assessed and they're five thousand dollars, why on earth does that belong in the MIDC fund at the state? And why is our revenue that comes in, when we've had to do computers, a person, we have court days, and we have king and queens, we have to have people on staff to comply with what the statute says, why does our county money have to be spent first to offset costs that we wouldn't have had to have at this, you know?
Uh, you know, I'm just looking at what happened to the Traverse City Public Schools.
Oh, right.
In the state, and I don't want to be in that situation.
No, because they'd have to deal with eighty-two, eighty-three counties. They were small potatoes compared to the others.
I'd say we take a short break now after starting the next thing.
Isn't this fun, huh? I was going to request that on that.
Go back to section, please.
I wanted to tell you that the Constitution was...
So we're, now we're on page, uh, what is it?
Six.
Number one, page six, six of seven?
Yeah.
I'm excited.
Yeah. Okay. Extraditions reimbursed would not be something that we would budget for. Um, I've, I'm currently collecting on some extradition, so I may have a dollar amount that I'll roll into here in two thousand nineteen, but it's nothing that we can put on it, it just comes from felony cases when we go and pick someone up because they just don't want to cooperate.
You anticipate that it would be a nominal amount?
Under two thousand. Under two thousand, they just pay a little bit, you know, fifteen dollars every week and... District Court Attorney Fees Reimbursed, Circuit Court, same thing there, it's just, um, you just don't want to go too high, you just don't know what your population's going to be. John, do you want to talk on the...
Where are we at?
Six eighty-two oh oh oh.
Childcare fee? Nope.
My, my question was just, what's, what's twenty-five percent of the admin fee?
Well, it's got to be a state mandated, uh...
Um, I'm just going to call because I'm too lazy to get up.
Many of these programs are forms you fill out and submit to the state and ask the calculation.
It is through the childcare fund, which is Fund Two ninety-two. Is, is that the portion that Joe talked about that they now are able to bill for administrative services?
Hmm, this looks like it has, has some history to it, so...
I think it started a year or two ago.
Okay. We'll come back to that one. Um, alcohol assessment reimbursement.
District Court.
District Court. User-based, prosecute attorney reimbursement assessment fee. Adolescent diversion project.
I was going to look up to see...
That was two thousand sixteen, we're not anticipating, so no budget for that. Uh, obviously, the fifteen percent admin for that project, we're not budgeting for that. The admin fees for BRA, Brownfield Authority, based on grants, uh, the, now, treaty receives, sometimes she's able to pull admin to reimburse her, her costs. Um, we just haven't done one in a while where she's been able to do that, so there's nothing budgeted for nineteen or twenty. Uh, refund rebates, uh, just any time it's like miscellaneous reimbursements.
Don't budget for it.
Yeah, we don't budget for it, I mean, you know, sometimes, you know, we have credit on account that we'll use up in the next month, and we won't put it in here, but if it's a one-time purchase, or for instance, it's a travel, uh, and that's been canceled, we'll just put it back into here rather than putting it into a line item. Uh, the Hayfield lease.
That's always seems to be a little problematic in getting that money.
I don't know what the deal is, because we haven't gotten money in the last three years.
Have you invoiced it? I haven't.
Well, who's to invoice them, MSU?
I wasn't sure if that was...
No, it's at least, no, the county has a lease with them.
Yeah, I thought it was Parks and Rec that did the invoicing.
Yeah.
Because I've never invoiced.
Are we talking the Hayfield?
Yeah.
Yes, every year, Chuck says he's going to look into it.
No, we did, we need to invoice them, I mean, I would not pay if I was, if I wasn't invoiced.
Yeah, why?
Yeah.
I moved, I moved that Parks and Rec invoice.
Who normally sends out invoices, I have the company.
The accounting department does. How many years do we need to go back?
On a contract, there's pay for years.
Well, then you know what?
When was the last time we were paid for that?
I don't charge you any interest if you haven't invoiced them.
It's, it's been a while, it's been a long time because there was a lot of confusion.
Why is it been allowed for them to continue to uh profit from this operation when we're not getting funding? This is the Parks and Rec issue?
Yep.
They're not billing?
They're not gonna pay.
Right.
We used to never bill them, there was never a bill. They knew what the fee was, they collected, and then they sent it to us.
And they paid it. It was part of their contract.
It was part of the contract. We don't invoice, we didn't invoice. But we sure can.
Well, they should, I mean, if I don't get invoiced, I'm not gonna pay.
It's just a principle.
Well, I just made a note of it, Hayfield, and we will have an invoice out to them this week. And we'll see how far we can go back.
Sure.
We gotta check to see when that lease expired because there was a timeline on that lease. I think it was three years.
Well, I, and I do know when, there was the windstorm.
Yeah.
I mean, we used that field, we gave it up, and I think that's when.
But those things got disrupted.
That was five years ago.
Yeah. And I don't know even if he's cutting it through Hay.
Well, let me ask the question, is, is he still utilizing, does he have, is he still utilizing the field?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think he is.
I, I could, I don't know.
Parks and Rec, I mean.
Anybody?
Thank you. Yeah, we need more information on that at this point.
Well, really, it's not a Parks and Recs because the contract is with the county board, not with the Parks and Recs.
There is a contract.
There was.
There was.
We, we developed one because there was no contract.
Right.
There was no contract. I'm gonna request, if I may, a copy of the contract for a review.
Because it may have expired. It's been a while since we, I'm just thinking a lot we should before we invoice them.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Maybe it hasn't expired already.
Yeah.
Well, we can still invoice them, even, I mean, if he's been using them, we don't hear the contract, he can still pay us.
Yep, yep, a lot of yeps here. We can move on.
Workman's card. This is John. Or Ms. Clerk.
It's the amount of after our claim, and they come through and look to see what our actual wages were, if there's any premium coming back to us. We've always left it at ten. And our audit is Monday.
Oh, it's a separate audit.
So we'll be able to adjust to the actual number? No?
I think so, if we get, if we get find out. He gives us the audit and then it's the, the chain that does if we're getting a refund or not. I do know that they lowered our contract, though. So from going from sixty thousand to forty-some thousand, there might not be revenue.
Right.
We leave it in there.
But we wanna leave ten in there when we don't really know what it is?
I mean, we can come back to it, we can put a sticky note there. Because they did bring the premiums down in two thousand nineteen, I'm, I, you know, I really don't have an answer, but if we get this finalized beforehand, then I'll, I'll know a little bit more. And we may have to pay.
Because they lower it, so it could be just the opposite, so it might not hurt to. We'll know more from Monday.
Yeah.
Our miscellaneous refunds and income, we do not budget. For reimbursement, that's our best guess, a thousand. Uh, we do not do jury and witness fees for employees. As you can see, though, they have testified and received their money. That's while they're on the job, so then the county gets the funds.
Township tax bond, insurance reimbursement. Annually, I go out and get a bond based on the township levy across the county. And part of that is, the township is bonding for themselves and their collections, so they're operating their fire rescue, um, any other self-imposed bond, uh, debt retirement. But for the school assessment at the road and for libraries and so on and so forth. And our, our millages, I bond for that and the difference we get reimbursed by the school districts that we go out. M M R M A reimbursements.
Yeah, we just, Chet and I just met with him. Like Chet had said earlier this week, and we do budget for this a hundred thousand and we do use this currently to offset the radio communications. We're slated to get a hundred and seventeen thousand back, but what Chet and I are gonna come to talk to you about, we do have it budgeted as a revenue for two thousand nineteen, but we could take, we're slated to get a hundred and seventeen thousand, which we can take the revenue in, but we need to look at an expenditure to get our, our retention fund up to at least one to two times what our claims are. Because we know with our exposure, every time we're sued, we have up to seventy-five thousand and we do currently have at least one, did I say that, maybe two suits? And our retention fund right now is below where it needs to be, and there is an audit finding on us. Um, and it does need to be up there, and unfortunately, you do need to build it up prior to year end because a lot of times, by the time we get their final reports from them, it is beyond where we can go back and make those corrections and we just don't want that audit finding. So currently, our reserves were about forty-four and our exposure already is at fifty-five, so we're already in the negative.
And as far as county treasurers, we're inquiring with M M R M A, we can be kind of a separate policy. So that's an outstanding question that I don't have for you today, but that's something that I would fund from my foreclosure fund for litigation purposes and, and separate that out from the counties so the county's not bearing the full brunt of that.
That'll be in two thousand nineteen, though.
That's what we're hoping for, basically, instead it sounds like we can get the money this year. So it's just, once we get more information, we'll, we'll bring it to you, but we wanna move quickly on it because we do need to get more money. Prior to most of you, we used to hold one fifty to two twenty-five in that fund to cover things. It does it in interest, he explained it earns interest probably at a higher rate than we at the county can get, but once we can build it up, then it's there, we don't have to worry about it till it's drawn down. Not the rest, we don't want hundreds of thousands, but a little bit more than what we have. Well, we have to, we're in the negative right now and it will be an audit finding. So, um, negative on paper, based on projections. So we'll be coming back. We'll, we'll be, we'll be coming back to you on that one. But so, right now, we know it's a hundred thousand. We know that in nineteen, we should be able to get a hundred and seventeen thousand.
Some years, we'd have used that to pay extra murders.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think we didn't budget it in that.
No, no, we didn't budget it when it came in.
Right.
It does one out, I mean, we could've just kept the money in the fund, you took the general fund, you chose to put it into MERS, additional payment, beyond what we're budgeting.
And, and I guess, my question is, is where, are you thinking that we would use that hundred thousand to build up the retention fund?
Well, we can take it in and we can show it as an expenditure and take it out of fund balance to build up the retention fund too. I mean, if we do have a budget to, there's, there is something to be said for bringing it in, but we do have the option by filling out the form to say we want the hundred and seventeen thousand just to go to the retention fund as opposed to taking the check. It's just kind of an in and out, but you have used this money to budget your radio communications, remember? So if, if you're not gonna take it in, something else is gonna have to give.
Right.
For our balancing that we're doing here. That's all I got. Restitution order, we're not gonna budget it. Reimbursed property damage from inmates, we're not gonna budget, we hope it doesn't happen. Cash over in short, we just use. John, then you've got your?
Yeah, so for D T R, we've got nothing on there right now. We haven't made any transfers here to date. We will be coming as soon as next week for a budget transfer from D T R to, um, general fund for the roof.
Well, that depends. Well, someone's gonna have to make a decision because.
We need some more money.
We have four, let's see, capital projects.
Yeah, Fund Four Seventy.
It's not on the list.
But, uh, as we move along in the budget process and looking at the H VAC, that's where we'll take a look and see how much we'll, we'll anticipate moving from D T R for two thousand twenty. And do a budget amount for nineteen.
So on that, on that D T R, right, we're down to, I was just asking, John, the cash ending balance right now is four hundred and four thousand. We paid fifty percent on the roof project because, what was it, was it one point two or one point one?
One point two.
We knew we were gonna be about three hundred thousand short, two to three hundred thousand. So we will, once we get those numbers, we either bring that to you for next week or in September because if they're moving as quick as what Chet said they are, we'll wanna have, make sure we have enough funds in there. We have enough money to pay the bill, but we need to make sure we're not running into the red here and that we're not just making a presumption on our part.
But we could also just go ahead and do it next week and just have that.
At the regular session, you mean, on the twenty-first?
Yeah.
Yep.
And then just have, have it in the four seventy for.
Because we're gonna need that based on what you're gonna do.
Either way.
With these other units all come out of that same fund too, so we're gonna need money.
So it'll probably come before you for next week.
Well, we should know by next Tuesday where our options are for this building.
Yeah.
After those decisions are made.
What's not used for the roof will be applied towards this. Inmate housing, this is Todd. What is it, per bed or?
Um, yeah, this is the inmate housing, is your two percent grant you get from Grand Terrace Band, a portion of that, and then any income that comes in from other counties, um, comes in to supplement your jail. It is at two twenty-six, four hundred this year, um, I'm sorry, four twenty, twenty. In two thousand nineteen, he did an upgrade of his video cameras and digital recording systems. He's also looking to update it again, if you've read through your narratives for twenty. If that is to happen, um, my suggestion would be then you would still take that balance from an increase, the transfer in this to offset his expense through the jail. So if you go ahead with his request, I believe he's requesting, he's requesting thirty, the final quote he has is for twenty-six, so we would kind of look at that and tweak it for two thousand twenty. That number would increase to offset those fees if you chose to. That is the difference between the two eighty-six and the two twenty-six is the sixty thousand that he implemented this past spring and updated his systems. Operating transfer in for recycling is the fifteen thousand from the millage that, um, has been allocated back to the general fund for the time that the staff and Trudy administer that millage. It's always been fifteen thousand.
Chad, I don't know, the agreement with the Grand Terrace Band jail, does that have an expiration date on it?
I don't know, actually, because it's a two percent grant.
I know, but it was very clever of them.
Right.
And pouring us.
It's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
They had that count as a two percent grant.
I don't know how that works. You know, that really shouldn't be.
They're taking their money.
To pay for.
For their own services, paying us for it, and saying that's a two percent grant allocation. And I don't know how that contract got negotiated, but.
It was.
All the people, I would say, all the residents in the town is losing out on that.
Right.
Because that's money they should be allocating to their services. They're basically paying.
Themselves. For themselves.
It's themselves and saying it's a two percent allocation.
Yeah, when it was first done at one point, I thought it was for a five or a ten-year contract.
Could you just double-check the years?
Yeah, it's.
Because every year when they have their grant allocation ceremony, they call on people out their own nonprofits, they count this as a two percent allocation.
Yeah, I, I never understood that.
It's very simple, it's just they make the rules. That's what it's.
Yeah, but we agree to that, we signed a contract with them.
Absolutely.
Saying they could count this as a two percent, which I don't, I mean, I wasn't here, I know the circumstances, but it doesn't seem very fair to the taxpayers that that's happening. That's money that should be allocated to other units of government. I mean, that's a direct benefit, they're having the benefit of it.
They pay for so many beds, I believe, in that contract.
I guess the number of beds whether they're used or not.
It's a guaranteed two percent.
He's part Indian, so.
It's a guaranteed funding source for beds they may or may not use.
Yep.
So it's guaranteed two percent funds.
Right, that is correct, that there will always be, I believe it was ten beds available for them. Whether they are used or not, we get the money.
Right.
Regardless of how we get the money, we need to get the money.
Right.
I mean, but I, I will look up the contract for you. I remember when it was drafted, I just, I thought it was under Olster Door. I know David Gill was here.
I think it was Sheriff Olster Door.
I've got a note, though.
But they're basically allocating a two percent funds to themselves.
But that's what most of their contracts do, any, whether it's with schools or whatever, the fire department.
Six ninety-nine oh thirteen, revenue sharing. Uh, we've got maybe two years left before we're out of the revenue sharing money that we've held in reserve. Like, I talked to our new treasurer for the state at conference. She said that she'll give me some more information as to our next steps to get into the calculation for future revenue sharing disbursements. We don't have two thousand twenty's allocation, so that is nineteen's rolled forward. Transferring from automation fund, I kinda think it is what it is.
Cost, yep, this is your cost allocation plan. This was, um, this, hi, this came in, um, it was new to you in two thousand nineteen when, uh, if you recall, the register of deeds mentioned that she was not going to budget that transfer towards her computer software, the computer allocation that we do through Ron's budget. So at that point, you decided you were going to go ahead and go follow through with the cost allocation plan. So her fee last year was six thousand from the cost allocation and this year is eighty-nine hundred.
Operating transfers in from the P R E fund, it is half of the wages for the P R E auditor. C P L fund, that is new.
So that's the cost allocation as well, when we mentioned last year with the two fifty-six. Michelle stated that you could also do that with the two sixty-three, so hers is down to sixteen hundred. Uh, the next one is cost allocation plan for senior services. And then also after that is the cost allocation plan for the construction, excuse me, building safety department. And so both of those are per the cost allocation plans, and those are revenues coming into the general fund.
What's the numbers on, just to be sure I'm on the right one?
Yep, so, yep, six nine nine two eight one is senior services.
Okay.
And six nine nine five forty-two right there at the end is building safety.
Okay, if you notice the last three digits in those, those numbers.
Correspond.
Correspond with their funds.
I've tried to correspond with them.
Just so you can tell, and if you're looking at this again.
The, um, operating transfers in from the D T R F, that's the foreclosure fund, that's what I was referencing earlier on. In two thousand seventeen, in two thousand eighteen, um, we had drawdowns, nothing, um, for nineteen, twenty. We're gonna hold off on that. Part of seventeen was actually a drawdown of fund balance, we used part of that for MERS. We had built up a fund balance in there from our fees, title searches and so on and so forth. You know, obviously revenues exceeded our expenditures and so over time, we built up fund balance. So we drew part of that down to help out with the MERS payment. Seven, or eighteen was an actual sale proceeds transfer. But, yeah, from, until we get more direction from council or the state, we're gonna be putting zero in for the five seventeen. And then lastly, um, construction codes. And that's their cost allocation.
That's your revenues.
That's your revenues.
Or the general fund.
Any questions about that at this time?
Clear as one.
Well, no, I, I think, I think that was really good going through it and I'm glad that we've, we've adjusted some of them and I, and I think, you know, there's a few questions I'll be answered. So I, I think next I'd like to, us to look at the, the sheet that was handed out about the supplemental.
This is what I reviewed with you last week, the same as the one I passed out Tuesday. You had a chance to look at it, but it's the same thing. But I'm assuming our next meeting this next Tuesday afternoon, we want to bring people in and start the process. I would say we start with the sheriff at nine one one, because that covers the majority of the requests.
So Matt Antsorke and the sheriff?
Yeah.
Does that, does that sound okay?
Do you want to bring in the judge also this time?
I as well.
Was it scheduled, see how it goes?
Yeah.
I'm not sure you need to bring in Jerry for the cost of repaving, repairing the parking lot. I mean, that's pretty self-explanatory, that's just a bunch of, we haven't got bids or anything yet, so. I'm not sure there's any dialogue to have in the conversation.
I'm sure you have some.
Oh, I'm sure you wouldn't have some comments, but we don't have any.
How long's it been since we did that last?
How long's it been since we did that last?
You said three years.
Three years?
In the last couple of years, we've just have sealed it.
I know.
So that's why it's more.
No, he thought he needed more.
Yeah, he's got to do patchings. And there are areas that really do need patching.
Can I just add something here? It's really important though, before you bring people in to talk about these, that some of it's delineated in here, so that you just have some familiarity so you can bring your questions. I'm certainly not in any way telling you how to do your job. I, I just don't want to see them get here and then you're not sure what your questions are, and you start committing to stuff if you don't know where the funding's going to come from.
Additionally, fact check their requests.
Well, normally we hear presentations, and we don't commit till after you go through the whole process, and look at the big picture.
So we can balance.
And that's when you can make a judgment.
Well, I mean, would, would a question be to where's the funding coming from, or is that something that we really have to answer?
No, it's something you can ask them too. I mean, where is this?
Are they willing to adjust their budget somewhere else for this, which is all in terms of priorities. Now, you've noticed in the panel, the request for the A E Ds and the lean line came from Matt, but Michelle and Jen are fit, really, the A D, they're going into sheriff vehicles.
Right, so why is that?
I don't want to speak and have the sheriff, I don't think he wants to come, other projects that compete with his vote, so it did not come from him. But the reality is, they are going into the sheriff vehicles. We don't have 911 vehicles. So if they can come, that should be sheriff request. The lean truly is split, but majority of the lean, really, it's for his deputies too, so it really is a sheriff expense. So that's why I put them as the sheriff and 911 jointly.
Michelle, let's.
We, we started to talk a little bit about it before, a couple of weeks ago, but nowhere on here are there any, any options for reductions of any sort.
Well, that's a, that's the.
And I do, I do think that we ought to at least have a cursory review, we've improved a lot of technology, maybe that's reduced the need for some of the deeds office staff, for example. And I'd, I'd like to at least have a little bit of opportunity to talk about possible reductions.
I think it's good that you look at the whole picture and then start making decisions, so we'll piece by piece. So I recommend you bring these people in, listen to them, you ask their questions. You may want to bring, in your example, bring in Dorothy to talk about her staffing, and get all those questions answered, and then have a session where you look at what are the options out, that you know the big picture.
Where the questions are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's hard to ask the questions, hard to get the answers if you don't know what the questions are, yeah. And as you go through, we've done in the past, we'd bring those in and then we would look at different departments. Because there may be areas where you budget X dollars every year and never spend it. No one is asking for, outside of these requests, everyone's kind of kept their line the same, but some of my items have not been reviewed in a long time.
Nobody's gone forward and asked for a reduction.
No.
Well, well, you know, one that I thought of was, was Park and Rec myself. I mean, they, they, we've increased that and increased it for different reasons, but yet, you know, we've never really looked back.
That's a good example.
At, at reducing it back to where, you know, they don't, if they have their tractor now and they have whatever, we haven't reduced it back, so.
And historically, they have not spent the full allocation.
Right.
So. And they also have a, no, they have a part-time personnel issue that you can review and to see what's.
Then we did, their part-time personnel in there for Parks and Rec, we put it in for 66 days at eight hours a day, but it can be broken down. We just used the months of June, July and August with no benefits. It equals out to a quarter of an F T E, so it is a slight change from what we had this year because we were able to take the benefits out. So you do need to go through and look at these budgets.
So that's a good example that you should talk about, right.
Well, that being said, then we should look at every budget and, and every department that historically returns dollars and roll it back. If we're going to do that, then we're not going to have a fund balance period in future. You have to keep that in mind, because that's where those dollars go. They roll back into the general fund.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, were you through?
Well, I'm not, but go ahead.
Oh, I was just talking like, I don't know, what about the accounting at senior services? Have we eliminated that, or is that still part?
That's eliminated.
Yeah, that has, all right.
So, so since, and that being said then, since, actually Parks and Rec tries to hold the budget down as much as possible because they know there's just not a lot of funding available to increase it to the, to the amount of the projects they would like to do, the work they would like to do on Miles Kimberly Park, Old Setler's Park, and even Veronica Bailey Park, then for a dedicated funding source is always a choice, and I think we'd have to put it to the voters, to say perhaps sell the hayfield. Sell the hayfield and put that money into a dedicated fund to go towards the rest of the parks. Not saying I'm advocating for it, it's just an option. If we can't fund Parks and Rec, then maybe we've got too many parks.
I think there's a little bit of caution when you're talking about scaling back some of these budgets if they don't necessarily meet their spending level. I don't know that you want to get in the position of the federal government where you adopt budgets, and they have the mentality that, gee whiz, I got $100,000, whether I want to spend it or not, I have to spend it, because if I don't spend it and show that I used up that $100,000, next year, by gosh, they're only going to give me $90,000. Sometimes there are reasons when you budget it, you have your best laid plans out, and you just, you can't get to it for one reason or another.
Well, the good thing is, we don't have that in town here.
But, but no, but I'm just saying.
We want to get that.
But we don't want to get to that, so we're forcing people to spend.
We don't see people in November, December, or something like that.
And we, we don't want to.
Michelle, answer.
What about I T? You know, we're contracting out, it's not really listed here as far as what's going to happen next year dollar-wise.
Well, it's part of the budget, there's no new request, but I can tell you, you brought us to talk at some point about what had happened after Ron's departure. So we've got to discuss that.
We have to plan.
We have no budget plan for it, but I, I can tell you what we're thinking.
So, so I mean, we're talking about the sheriff, Matt and Sirky and the, and the judge coming in at the next session?
Do you want us before they speak to review the budgets with you? Or do you just want their presentations without looking at any of their budgets first?
Do we have enough time to walk through this process? It would appear that we would have enough time to walk through this process, maybe a little bit slower, and reserve the next meeting to get through some of the basics here, hold off those interviews, one more session.
It's up to you, it's up to all of you.
I kind of like.
If you want to do that, we can do that.
I kind of like that idea.
Go through the budgets?
Yeah.
Next Tuesday afternoon?
Yes, we've had very limited conversation. I don't think that we've had enough time to digest even everything that is in this book before we start doing the interviews, and I think that's a great suggestion, Michelle, and I, I agree. I think we need a little bit more time for review on our own time, one.
So we go through revenues and then expenditures, because you're right, we have not looked at expenditures, and we really should look at that.
Exactly, yeah.
That would probably take us most of the.
Yeah.
Right, and then, you know, it just allows for a little bit more time for us to get a grip on exactly all the things that we heard here today, review the information before we start, you know, getting sidelined with special requests.
Well, let's, uh, let's, so we're going to do that on 13th, and let's look at the next meeting date. Some of you were kind enough to give me your schedules when you're not available.
Oh, yeah.
I asked the staff to also, so I have it, so after the 13th, the next opening, I see that majority of you are available, at, at least on paper, because a lot of you I don't have a schedule, it's, it's not till the 23rd.
I'm available.
Between the 14th through the 22nd, because I think everyone's booked up, with the Matt conferences going on and some other events. I have at least a couple of you that have conflicts every single day up through the 23rd.
I'm available that day.
That's a Friday.
Staff-wise for us, that's a really good day, because I, I'd kind of like Jen to be here, and I'm not, I called her in today, but I can't.
On her birthday.
On her birthday.
On her birthday.
But I've got to let her go to a volleyball thing with her daughter on the 27th and 28th, so 23rd's a really good.
23rd is, I don't have anyone, at least on paper, that has a conflict. I'm good.
On the 23rd? So 9 o'clock?
Well, you, you tell me.
The only thing is the same thing you, you have play as on the 23rd, it's a different date.
Well, that's a economic club, but that's not county related, so.
No, no.
Yeah, I, I couldn't meet until about 1:00 or 1:30.
Could not meet?
Right.
So we took me in the afternoon.
That's fine.
I'm fine with me, 1:30?
1:00?
1:00 or 1:30?
We went back to 1:30, at least.
You can do 1:30.
1:1:30. 1:30 on the 23rd, Friday?
Mm-hmm.
And at that point, we'd schedule, because I have to call people and make sure they're, they have it on calendar also. So 23rd, schedule the sheriff, Matt and the judge.
Block until 1:05?
We'll just, yeah.
Just block, you just block?
Yeah, block that one.
That's 1:00, that's 1:18.
You want to look at another date too, because it's going to be September here pretty soon, before we know it.
How about the last week in August for availability? At this point, I am, I don't think I'll be available Wednesday morning, but the rest of the week looks like it would, I could work with it.
If, on that last week of August, just from a staffing perspective in our offices, the 26th, 29th and 30th, I think are the best days for us, if there's any way.
There's some conflicts on the 27th.
27th and 28th.
But I don't have any other, I don't have any report conflicts on the 26th, 28th or 29th.
Well, if we go to the 26th, we're only given the weekend in between.
Yeah, let's go, let's go to the following Friday.
You know, because the, the staff won't have any time to do anything.
29th, 30th.
I need your services on the 29th tomorrow.
Yeah, so.
We have a service that won't last long.
Right, you can do it after that on the 29th.
1:00 on 29th?
Or you said you had conflict with the service?
No, the 29th is great.
29th is good.
Oh, okay.
What time on the 29th? There's a senior services committee meeting on 9/30. But that's not a critical meeting, if we have to, if all of you would rather do the budget, we can change that senior services meeting.
I can, I can get it all to the afternoon, so.
I mean, there's nothing.
I would change it.
There's nothing major happening.
All right, so.
1:00 on the 29th, is that correct?
Well, that's.
Well, it could be.
You can't make that, I can do 1:00.
She can do 1:00.
1:00 on the 29th?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have 12th on the 23rd, 1:30, and the 29th at 1 P M.
Shall we shoot for another day while we're here?
The 13th is right after our executive. So that's where you're saying.
12:30 or whatever.
Yeah, let's try to schedule another meeting.
Let's look at September.
We have to go get calendars to make sure you've got room usage, okay? We just go get a, unless you want us to just give us some dates and we can check to make sure you've got.
Right, because we can always switch out, but at, at least this way, we've got it on our calendars and we don't plug something else in.
Exactly.
The 29th is at 1 P M. And, and what we noticed about all of you.
We don't have to worry about a meeting room that way.
So we're looking at the first week of September, Labor Day's obviously not good, which is Monday, the 2nd.
We have executive on the 10th, as Commissioner Long, Longner mentioned.
Yeah.
We can schedule tentatively an afternoon session.
On the 10th?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
I can't, I can't. You're talking about afternoon of the 10th?
After the executive committee.
It's after executive, we're going to be here anyway.
Right, that's good. Okay, that gives us three meetings, so we should be hopefully in pretty good shape by then and decide where we are.
Four meetings.
Yeah, four, because that's right, because we have one next Tuesday.
And we could bear in mind that if we wanted to meet at, say, 4:00 for a couple hours before the regular board meeting on 17th, that's also.
We can see where we're at.
Yes.
So I have the 13th next Tuesday after the executive. I have the 23rd at 1:30 P M. I have the 29th at 1:00, and then September 10th after the executive.
I would also like to add the opportunity on the 17th to pencil in a timeframe just before our regular board meeting.
Let's just block off on 3:00, see where we are, we can pick the time as it gets closer.
Yeah.
If you want to just block off 3:00.
September 17th.
Yeah.
Right, because by the time we get to that point, I'll work, get checked the dates, we'll be to the point where if we're going to approve it on October 8th.
It's early this year, yeah.
I've got to go to publication to be able.
At the end of September, so we really have to wrap up by the 17th almost, or that week.
Well, that's why I was kind of pushing to get these meetings on calendars, so that, you know, we have a lot enough time for the process.
And maybe even the week of the 10th, if maybe that Thursday or Friday, we're open that week.
Well, we'll see where we are.
That makes it easier for us.
I'm not thirsty for those meetings, we should be in pretty good shape.
You want us to determine a, another date between the 10th and the 17th?
It does not matter to me.
I certainly hope after four meetings, we're in good, good shape.
Well, yeah, but.
We should be.
And the clerk is just telling us that if she.
You don't think we'll be ready after all these meetings?
Well, if, if my, if, if it's my choice, the 17th is a really bad day to have a meeting, we're getting too close to the deadline. The work on staff is tremendous. I mean, if you have to have another meeting, it's just easier to do it later in the week of the 10th, if you need two meetings that week.
Well, the 12th then?
So.
About 12, Thursday?
Why don't we leave the 17th there for any cleanup?
Yep, that's easy.
That might be required.
Because I mean, Chuck's right, I don't, I, I don't know, we have looked at all the numbers, you have not obviously had as much time as we have to look at them.
Right.
I don't know what you can do.
Well, the good news is we have fewer requests in past years, and we have fewer people presenting. In the past years, as you know, we took several meetings, you have these special requests coming in, and we don't have that case this year, so that will definitely help.
How about Friday the 13th?
That sounds good.
Availability, again in the afternoon?
Afternoon.
So is everybody free for budget at 1:00?
Are we, are we adding this in addition to the 17th?
Potentially, yes.
Potentially, just to.
Adding an additional tentative 17th meeting for any cleanup issues that the clerk may have discovered.
Yep, got you. That's 13th at 1:00?
1:00. Yeah, and I'll give these dates out to all of you. And we'll just play by ear. 1:00, yeah. And I'll give these dates out to all of you. And we'll just play by ear.
Right.
Every time we meet, we'll look at the calendar and see where.
It's on our calendar so that we can.
We don't want the clerk to be stressed out, so.
I'm not going to schedule customers or doctors' appointments.
Got to get the clerk happy.
So do you think we have enough in there now, Michelle?
Yes.
Do you think we have enough?
Yes.
Okay. You feel comfortable with the allowance?
I, I do. And I'm not sure you'll be ready for your interviews on the 23rd, but you know, that's certainly workable. If you're not ready, you're not ready. We'll just move it on to the next.
We'll be.
I think we'll just check down.
That was easy, Chad.
Well, I don't mean check down, I mean.
That was easy, Chad. I always hear about all this difficulty with scheduling.
Well, you, this time, geez. Usually, yeah, and mark my words, next week, you're going to, two of you are going to come back, well, I got this and this, and I got this and this, and you know. I'm just talking from a historical perspective.
Pull this chain down again.
Is there anything else? Anything from staff?
No, other than.
From the birthday girl, she was.
Do we want to go any further today and?
No.
And sing to her, you mean, or?
Other than the information you've asked us for today, is there anything else specifically that you want us to prep? Or if there is, you could send us an email?
Yeah.
And we can share it and we can have that documentation that if you have the time between now and then to read some of these, it would probably be helpful.
When you talk about those, you're talking about the supplemental things.
The narratives.
Yes.
And there aren't narratives for everyone.
And they're in ours, aren't they, under the supplemental information?
Yes.
Yeah. Not everyone has narratives.
And there's page numbers on this related to each of them.
Thanks for the comprehensive report, John, today. General fund, debt, cash flow,